I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are David Rosacker, Michael Pate, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Sidney Franklin, and I am Christine Carnes, Vice Chair. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Acting Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Acting Current Planning Manager, Robert LaRocco, Planning Board Administrator, Jennifer Taylor from the City Law Department, and Lisa Egan, Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us, and you are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, or been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, enter it on the sign-in sheet, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant, and after the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record, and enter it on the sign-in sheet. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information, and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board, as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. The current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder on the east wall of this room. And there are no changes to the consent agenda, so we will start with that. Okay, the first item on consent is Agenda Item Number Six. Case C-10-19-245, C-12-19-246. The applicant is Cameron General Contractors, on consent for layover. The request is preliminary plat approval of Hanover Falls Center, a subdivision outside the city limits, along with rezoning from AG to MU. The location is northwest of 156th and State Streets. Would anyone like to have this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Seven, Case C-10-19-247, C-12-19-248. The applicant is Joan Squires, Omaha Performing Arts Society, on consent for approval. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of OPA Campus, a subdivision inside city limits with a waiver of Section 538, 5C through D easements, along with rezoning from DS and CBD to CBD. Property is located within an ACI-1 overlay district. The location is northwest and southwest of 11th and Dodge Streets. Would anyone like to see this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eight, Case C-10-19-261, C-12-19-249. The applicant is All Holy Spirit Greek Orthodox Church, on consent for approval. The request is preliminary plat approval of Everett Place, Replat 1, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG and R5 to DR and R5. The location is 450 South 193rd Street. Would anyone like to see this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Nine, Case C-3-19-262, C-10-18-219, C-12-18-220. The applicant is Falcone Land Development, and is on consent for approval. The request is preliminary plat approval of Estancia Lots 301 through 512 and Outlots J through L, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG and R5 to DR, R4, and R5, along with the request for a variance to the present development zone boundary of the urban development element of the city's master plan. The location is northwest of 210th and Ford Streets. Would anyone like to see this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Case C-10-19-256. The applicant is Mark McClellan, on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from DS to CBD. Property is located within an ACI-1 overlay district. The location is 2514 and 2524 Leavenworth Street. Would anyone like to see this case removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Case C-10-19-257. The applicant is Martha Villanueva, on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from GI to R4, location 2501 Elm and 2906 South 25th Streets. Would anyone like to see this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Case C-10-19-263. The applicant is PJ Morgan Investments, Inc., on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from GI to NBD. The property is located within the ACI-1 overlay district. Location, 1405 South 13th Street. Would anyone like to see this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Case C-7-07-073. The applicant is Joe Turasik, on consent for approval. The request is approval of a major amendment to the CUP to allow hospital services general in the GO. Location is 8303 Dodge Street. Would anyone like to see this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Case C-8-19-258. The applicant is Edward Rose Development Company, LLC, on consent for layover. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow a broadcast tower in the R6 District with a waiver to Section 55226, height, to allow 100-foot-tall tower. The location is north of George B. Lake Parkway and West Hugh Road. Would anyone like to see this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Case C-10-19-264, C-8-02-063, C-8-02-064. The applicant is Menard, Inc., on consent for approval. The request is approval of a major amendment to the special use permit to allow construction sales and service in a CC District, and approval of a major amendment to the Large Project Special Use Permit, along with expansion of the ACI-IV Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Portions of the property are located within the ACI-IV Overlay District. The location is 708 North 120th Street. Would anyone like to see this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eighteen, Case C-7-19-265, C-8-19-260. The applicant is Metabolic Engineering and Recovery Center, on consent for approval. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow personal improvement services in the GI District with approval of a parking adjustment, Section 55, 736. Location is 107, 29 J Street. Would anyone like to see this removed from consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Case C-14-19-242. The applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It's on consent for approval. The request is vacation of the East-West Alley west of North 28th Avenue between Benny's Street and Maple Street, abutting Lot 91, Block O of Geese's Edition, and Lot 3 through 11 and 13, Block O of Remington Subdivision. Would anyone like to see this removed from the consent agenda? So it's on consent for approval. If we don't remove it from the consent agenda, we will not hear public testimony on it, and it will be approved if there is a motion and a vote to approve it. Would you like to testify on it?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll remove it. Okay, those are all the items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion, no matter. Go ahead, Pat.
I'm looking for approval of Agenda Items Number Seven, Eight, Nine, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, Seventeen, and Eighteen.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please call the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, and for the remaining items?
Motion to lay over Number Six and Sixteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please call the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
So those were the consent agenda items. If the matter you are here for was on the consent agenda, those matters have been disposed of, and you are free to leave. You are also free to stay and hear the remainder of the testimony on the remaining cases. Sir?
Uh, the subdivision is Number Six. We just didn't understand the process of that. Would you actually like to...
It's been laid over, so it'll come to you.
So Agenda Item Number Six was on consent for layover, so that will be heard next month? Well, we don't know. I guess it will be heard the next time it's on the agenda. So it wasn't approved, it was approved for layover. Yeah, so...
If...
Yeah, I understand.
As long as it doesn't come back for next month... We won't send new notifications if it's back on next month, so you could contact us to ask. If it's laid over to the February meeting or later, we will send new notifications to neighbors.
Let's work it out. I understand. Is that my area?
I can give you a card. You can reach out to us, and we can give you the information that we have.
Thank you so much. Okay. Sorry about that. All right, we will move then to the regular agenda. Our first item is administrative only, so there will be no opportunity for public testimony. It's Agenda Item Number One, Case C-10-19-176, C-12-19-177. The applicant is Dave Lanahaw, Lanahaw Pacific, Inc. The request is final plat approval of Blue Sage Creek II, a subdivision outside city limits, along with rezoning from AG to R4. The location is northeast of 213th and F Streets. May we hear from the city, please?
Yeah, so this is final plat approval of Blue Sage Creek II. The preliminary plat was before the Planning Board on October 2nd, recommended for approval, and City Council recommended approval on November 26th. This final plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plat. It has a total of 69 lots and four outlots. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from AG to R4, and approval of the final plat subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to City Council.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments from the Board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve rezoning from AG to R4, and approval of final plat subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to the request to the City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved, six to oh.
Okay. Agenda Item Number Two, Case C-11-19-240. The applicant is Nautilus Homes. Request is approval of a PUR Planned Unit Redevelopment Overlay District, laid over from the November 6th meeting. Location is 501 South 38th Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, city staff, I'm Jay Nautilus with Nautilus Companies, 2285 South 67th Street in Exarban Village. I don't usually feel that it's appropriate to say what I'm going to say, but I want to start off by saying that I know last time we were here, it was a frustrating day, and there were an awful lot of emotions in the room, and I just want to go on record as saying if my conduct was a little bit too rigid that day and made the proceedings a little more stressful, I apologize for that. Having said that, since we were here, I've had an opportunity to meet with various representatives of the neighborhood three times. The first was the Friday immediately after our meeting, and then two subsequent times, one kind of in the middle and then one early this week. And, you know, we did a lot of soul-searching and thinking about the project, and thinking about what's right for the community, what's right for the neighborhood, what's right for us. All the while, being mindful that we're all very committed to the growth, improvement, and advancement of our community, and as I said last month, redevelopment of the core of our city is very, very likely to set the tone for the whole region. And that really, more so than anything, is what has piqued our organization's interest in working so hard in the core of the city. Having said that, we've done a few things, and I just want to take you through five images, and then I think I can be done, and we can get on with your questions and others' testimony. This is the site plan, or the aerial on the screen, so I know no one really needs to be reminded, but the area in yellow is the site. And we heard a lot of talk last time, and I know everyone has gone on tours. We all have a really good idea of what the single-family/mansion homes that remain in the neighborhood look like. One of the things I do want to remind everyone is that in... Oh. What did I do? I didn't do anything. Okay. I just want to remind everyone what the context is. These three large buildings are all within a block or less, if not adjacent to the site we're talking about. So there's a blend here. And while I felt that the building that we presented before, and we can go to that, while I felt like the building we presented before was really good, what wound up happening is that we took this building, and we redesigned it a bit, and it got even better, in our opinion. But then we got to thinking about what would be the best for everyone in the neighborhood. And we have completely modified the design, and this is the new design. We call it Mansion Flats. There are a number of really major departures and changes here, above and beyond the architecture and the materials. A few things have happened. The number of units in the building has been decreased from 15 to 13. I will tell you, the size of the building really isn't very flexible, so that kind of makes the business case more difficult. That's not your challenge at all, except you want to approve projects and send them on to the council and offer development that have a really, really high probability of being successful. So while it's not your problem, it is a little bit of a consideration. We wind up with a building that is essentially the same size. It has a fewer number of units, from 15 to 13. Because of some of the major architectural changes, it affected the layout of the individual residences, so we had to reduce the number. So we have a more expensive building with fewer units. That's going to drive the price per unit up a little bit, and we're comfortable with that, but it is absolutely a consideration. The second thing is that we left the same amount of parking in the building. So we're doing our very best to continue to make sure, to the extent we can, that onsite there is more than ample parking for the residences. And we're still... Now we're above one parking stall per bedroom, which is really good, whether it's a condominium or an apartment. So those are a couple significant things about the building. The next thing is that there's a lot of discussion last time about some pending litigation between our seller and the property owner to the south with respect to the potential of an adverse possession claim. What we have done is assumed that that claim will be successful, and so we had to make sure that the project will work without that land being available. So the building setbacks have been changed on the south side a little bit pursuant to the PUR toolkit, and that's all contained in your recommendation. Then with respect to the building aesthetics itself, you can see the architecture is dramatically different. I hope you like it. We certainly like it. We have moved the entrances, the garage entrance from the west side of the building around to the north side of the building, and that's been signed off on by Public Works and Planning as with respect to the location and ingress/egress. We moved the entrance to the building from the corner around to the north side of the building, and that allowed us to move the stair tower and the elevator tower, so there wasn't a big architectural element there, which seemed to be pretty objectionable to some of the neighbors. So we moved that around. That's really what caused the number of units to go down, because now it's in the middle of the building. The balconies were a concern for our neighbors to the north primarily, at least those are the folks that voiced the concern. So instead of having extended balconies, we have inset balconies. I think it makes a big difference. The roof line is not straight. It's set back and slanted back now. We've put acorn lights, which are more consistent with the theme in the neighborhood around the perimeter. We're playing with kind of a fancy entrance on the north side. Still have a couple little architectural details to work out there, but now we have an entrance that's a bit covered so that at least the pedestrian can be a little bit more protected from the elements. We have changed the trees along the west side to tulip trees, which is consistent with what is on the west side of the street there. And we really like the building. So for us, not only did we take the time, in my opinion, to sit back and reflect on what we heard, we've taken some time to have some meetings. This is a huge change to the style and the character of the building. The other questions that the neighborhood had are about the setbacks, and we are 23 feet, I believe, from the back of the curb on the north side of the building, and 18 feet from the back of the curb on the west side of the building. There really is not a way to shrink this building in terms of the footprint, and I don't... I'm not comfortable reducing the number of units beyond where we are. I wouldn't want to make them smaller than they are, because I don't think it's a match with the marketplace, what's out there in the market. So we are... We're really pleased to present this to you. We've done, I think, a lot of listening, soul-searching, and thinking with respect to the dialogue we've had with the folks from the neighborhood. We want to be great neighbors. We don't want to be just good neighbors. We want to deliver a level of quality that is the benchmark, which doesn't have anything to do with cost. It's just we're really committed to making sure this is extremely well-done. And that's, you know, that's what we... The way we approach all of our projects. This is important, because this is a start for a different kind of a product in the core of the city, in this neighborhood. It's very much in demand, and we hope that you'll find it within your thinking to approve the project today. Thank you.
Jay, a couple of questions for you. I'll find here real quick. And I apologize, I was absent at the last meeting, so if I'm repetitive in some of the questions, I apologize in advance. But you mentioned level of quality in this, and obviously I know the developments you've done are very good, developments that are very quality. The very top level of this new design here, what are the materials made of there?
Well, there's a combination of materials. You've got to bear with my eyes here, Mike, but there is a... There's a precast material. There's another cementitious panel. There's brick. And then at the top here, there's a metal panel that is intended to be virtually maintenance-free. We've put a lot of these kinds of panels in different configurations on our buildings, and you've got to kind of search, kind of far and wide, for a material that will look as good 10, 12, 20 years from the day it's installed, as it will when it's installed. So we're pretty comfortable. We've got a metal panel material here that isn't really going to read as metal at all. It's up and it's back. I think it'll look stunning.
Okay. Yeah, the rest of the building, I think, looks good. The only question I had on the design was that very top level, because I thought it looked like metal in there, but I just didn't know what kind of metal you were going to put in there. And I think it enhances the look of the building to a certain degree, but I just wanted to know what kind of level of quality. The other thing is, when you've had your neighborhood meetings, in your opinion, how have the meetings, particularly the recent meetings, how have the meetings gone?
You know, I think they've gone okay. I'm a little disappointed in how they've gone. Sometimes I wonder if people realize the effort that we've gone to. But, you know, it's their neighborhood, and we wanted to... We want to share that neighborhood. So people have some emotion. They have history, and they have emotion. Realism about the community and how things, the process, just the process, the master plan, the tools and whatnot that are in place for anyone who wants to build or redevelop or develop something, I think are a little bit confusing for some folks. And so, you know, I've noticed that there's been maybe a false perception of how things are to be crafted, submitted, reviewed, responded to. Do you need to go under a PUR? You don't need to go to the zoning board of appeals, but if you went under R7, you may need to go get a waiver. There's confusion about that. There's confusion about that. I think that creates some angst. There's been some maybe not-so-great projects, in some people's opinion, built in some of the neighborhoods. And so we sense a little of that. They, the neighborhood doesn't know us. We haven't worked in the neighborhood before. So I think it takes a little time to get to know one another. Most people, I think, have been fairly open-minded. There have been a few that have been terribly close-minded and candidly very disrespectful, but that's all I'm going to say about that.
And one last question for you. So you're reducing the number of units from fifteen to thirteen. Obviously, it's going to drive up the cost per union, unit. The average size of the unit is going to be, what, two?
So right now, we would target the one-bedroom dens to be about eleven hundred. Then we would have two-bedroom units that would be around sixteen to seventeen hundred square feet. And then the penthouse units on the top would be around twenty-five to twenty-seven hundred square feet.
And how many of those would there be?
Three.
Three?
Todd, could you give your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Todd Swerzak, Noddle Companies, two-two-eight-five, South Sixty-First Street.
So the, so the price range of per unit then, depending on which type of unit is going to be what to what then?
Well, the smaller units are going to be in the high threes and low fours. And we're going to probably experience, if you just averaged it, and maybe that isn't fair, but, you know, we thought we were around four hundred thousand a unit before. We felt really good about that. Now I think we're going to wind up needing to be somewhere between eight and thirteen percent higher than that. But part of it's going to depend on if a buyer asks us to do something more custom for that. And we're also going to be able to combine. If people are interacting with us soon enough, you know, we'd be happy to deliver a triple wide to somebody. That's actually happened to us before. So we're going to try to be that flexible. But I think the overall investment, which might be the more important number for the eventual homeowners, is going to be somewhere in the range of six and a half to seven million dollars. So it's significant investment and tax base. And I think it will set some new comparable values going forward.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Jake?
Yes?
I'm just curious, has this project always been called Mansion Flats? Or is this another change that you've made to pay homage to the neighborhood?
Changed the name. Do you like the name?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's interesting.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Yeah, are there any opponents? Come on forward, please. And if you are wishing to speak, if you want to move on down to the front, that helps keep things moving. And we do have a sign and sheet. Is it on the podium, Lisa? That's kind of a new piece of our procedure. There is a signing sheet, if you'd like to sign in, please. And then just state your name and address.
Okay. Yep. I'll go first, if that's okay. I'm Kurt Snodgrass. Before I begin, let me apologize in advance. I'm going to rush out right after this. I have to pick up my kids from school. So I appreciate everyone letting me go first. My address is six thirty-two South Thirty-Eighth Street, about two blocks south. I thank you for your decision last month to hold over this matter. We've tried to work with Mr. Noddle since that time. And although the design changes they've made are favorable, I've got to say that since the size of the buildings are number one concern, he's not been willing to make it smaller. And so we're asking you to vote against the proposal. Now, we noticed that you treated Mr. Noddle with considerable deference at the last meeting. We don't object to that. We know he's an important man. He's done a lot of big projects over the years. He's certainly earned your respect. But commercial developments and residential ones are very different. And people in our neighborhood, or any neighborhood really, just don't want to see large buildings built right next to their home. All four corners of this intersection have single-family homes with yards. This A C I one zoning overlay is defined as downtown-like. But this is not a downtown-like corner. Mr. Moulton agreed with me on that point. So having nearly zero street setbacks doesn't fit the neighborhood. It tries to make the mansions nearby look like they're the ones out of place, even though they've been there for a hundred years. We know that Mr. Noddle's worked closely with the planning department to get the recommendation. But we ask you to keep in mind that the recommendation is only possible by waiving eight zoning standards. And those standards all point to what we're saying, that this building is too big for this lot. We realize that the department and the board don't want to get crossways with Mr. Noddle. Believe me, it's not fun having him work up a head of steam coming at us like this. But can you really, in good conscience, support waiving all of those standards for him over the objections of practically all the neighbors in the area? I just want to leave with a closing thought that if your home was next door, would you want a four-story condo built right next to you? With virtually no yard space? I dare say you probably wouldn't, and we don't either. So I ask that you'll think about it from our point of view and do that when you vote today. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
My name is Rhonda Stuber. I live at thirty-seven oh eight Farnham Street, and I'm the Blackstone Neighborhood Association President. At the end of our last meeting in November, the planning board sort of came to the conclusion that the biggest concern that we had was the design of the building. But that's really not totally true. I mean, the design is important, but it wasn't the only aspect. And even though our resolution mentions the fact that there's nine different places in regards to size on the resolution, which I promise I will not read again. I covered that last time. But there is nine areas where we talk about size. One has to do with density. Proposal is neat, is nearly three times larger than the requirement. And that it should feature seven or eight units, not the fifteen. We also talked about height. The project exceeds the height requirement by ten feet. We talked about setbacks. We talked about the south, to the south, of only twenty-four feet instead of the required thirty feet. We talked about placement, being the building right next to the sidewalks on the corner, the variance intended for commercial downtown projects, not at all in keeping with the surrounding structures. And then we also discussed the variances that Noddle Company is asking for eight zoning variances. So these were all issues of great concern. Blackstone Neighborhood met just this last Monday with Noddle to discuss the final proposal. And very little was changed concerning the footprint of the building. So I just wanted to show you a couple of pictures here. See if I can figure this out. Here are, this is the original proposal on this side. And this is the revised thirteen units. So this is fifteen, this is thirteen. They're identical, is what I'm getting at. Nothing has been changed as far as the footprint of that building amongst the people who live around it. And so this is just as important to us as what the building looks like. And again, it's not, it's not that we hate the building itself. What we don't like is where he wants to put it. And so that, that's one picture. I've got one more here. The aerial view, unfortunately, my color printer went on the blink when I was trying to get this copied. But I just took a red pen, being a teacher, and I just marked the houses around it so that you can see the difference of the size of the house. Here's the house right next door. So here's the variance issue we've got going on. But yeah, it makes, it makes our houses look itty-bitty compared to what's going to go on that block if you approve it. So that is our biggest concern. Not that we don't want condos in our neighborhood. It's size, size and the lot. So what happened is after the meeting this Monday, the people who were there voted on an affirmation to the resolution, basically. And I'll read that to you. It's short and sweet. It basically says, "Be it resolved that the Blackstone Neighborhood Association affirms its opposition as expressed in its October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen resolution to the condominium building proposed by Noddle Companies for five oh one South Thirty-Eighth Street. Although some favorably designed changes have been made, the size of the proposed building remains essentially the same as before. Therefore, we continue to believe that it does not fit in the neighborhood and urge that the planning board vote against the proposal." I'll let you have a copy of this, too. I don't know who I give it to, but...
You can bring it up here.
Okay, I'll get it to you. So what I need to say now has to do with this A C I dash one, which is the area of civic importance that we discovered our entire neighborhood was overlaid, not just the areas down the corridors, but the entire neighborhood. We had no idea that this took place at all. So it is a very serious detriment to our neighborhood. I understand the corridor areas going down Farnham Street. You know, we've been very reasonable about all the development that's been going on, and it's going to happen on Dewey as well, in some areas, and Harney Street. We know that. But, you know, the definition of civic, when I looked it up in the dictionary, says relating to the activities of people in relation to their city. So how is this important in the relationship to our personal area? In my eyes, it strips the people who are living in this historic neighborhood of any rights or ability to protect what they have invested their time and money in. Its purpose is to tear down and destroy what was. So, you know, there was a comment made by a planning board member at the end of the last meeting stating that if we wanted to do something with that property, we should have bought it. Well, that property never had a for-sale sign in the front yard, like you typically see. They seldom do in our neighborhood. My neighbors and I aren't looking to invest in something to tear down. We're into preservation and restoration. And that's what this particular neighborhood, we feel, should be very important to the whole city, not just to us, but to Omaha's history. Thank you.
Rhonda, just a real quick question for you. So you mentioned the size of the project being a little bit objectionable, right?
More than a little bit.
Okay. So are there any other similar-sized buildings or projects in the general area that this is proposed to be?
There is. In fact, there's some that are probably bigger. And they were built back in the fifties. And so we keep getting this question asked of us. And the fact of the matter is, big buildings in that area, built back when people were moving west, and we could do a whole story about that, but people left and these buildings showed up in the fifties, sixties. And they were, they shouldn't have been. It was probably a planning board decision made back then that maybe had been, should have been considered when those were built.
How long ago do you think they were built?
Fifties, I would guess, in the fifties.
When did you move into your home?
We've been there for twelve years, yeah. So we moved in knowing that they were there. And with a little T L C, some of them could probably gussy themselves up a little bit and look better. But they're still a little bit out of place for what used to be in that neighborhood. We just want to keep what is there somewhat what people notice when they come in the neighborhood.
So what would you like to see if it's not this objectionable?
We, we're not against condominiums. We're not against townhomes. We're not against duplexes. But we want them to, whatever, you know, like Kurt mentioned, would you, what would you want next to your house? If they were going to build some multi-housing kind of things, what would you want to see there? That's all we want, is something that doesn't tower over the top. The variances with the A C I. I mean, we have absolutely no control over what city planning or the city council or whoever does these things. I'm going to learn more about this. But how did that happen? And what can we do to maybe protect the historical areas that are in this area, from the river all the way to Seventy-Second Street? These areas should be somewhat protected from this kind of thing happening. It just, some of these buildings that are going up literally in the middle of neighborhoods are a travesty, if you ask me. And I've heard it from others in other neighborhoods, so...
Can I offer something? I think, Rhonda, everyone on, sitting up here appreciates you and the Neighborhood Association coming here. Your passion and interest is clear. I mean, I really feel for you. I appreciate you coming here. It's clear that you have invested in your home and your neighborhood. What I am assuming here is, we've been talking a little bit about what I think is, there's a perception of ownership kind of challenge here that I think is often the case in older neighborhoods that maybe have a historic element where homeownership is really strong. I think there's this kind of like neighborhood perception of ownership that is just, it's not real. It's not, it's not accurate. And so because you don't own the property in free markets, you can't really control, you know, what your neighbor does with his or her property, is what I'm trying to say. And so what I want to offer to you is, has the Neighborhood Association looked into some type of covenant or other restriction that you can establish in your neighborhood so that in the future, you do have actual control, actual ownership, and can be involved in some of the decisions? Because currently, that's not the case.
I know. And I'm glad you asked that question because we've been thinking a lot about that lately. And I've been invited to some Neighborhood Association meetings in the general midtown area. And we're not the only neighborhood that's concerned. They're kind of mortified at what they see. And they're sort of watching their back and wondering when, when it's going to happen near their house.
Right.
So yeah, if there is any possible way that we can get a covenant that helps historical neighborhoods...
I would encourage you to.
Oh, yeah.
For the future.
Oh, yeah.
But where we are now is, you know, the, you know, Noddle has done their due diligence to comply with the city's master plan. It's, you know, it's a, we're in a...
This caught us just like a smack in the face.
Right.
We had no idea. We didn't know the house was for sale. We know it was owned by a landlord that didn't take care of it. And we, you know, we're hoping for something better. But it was all just, you know, took the wind out of our sails. So, yeah, it's hindsight. And so I don't know what can be done. I would hope something could be done, but we shall see.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
You're welcome.
Any other opponents?
Hi, Stephen Radom. I'm an attorney with Croker Huck Law Firm, two-one-two-zero, South Seventy-Second Street, Suite twelve hundred. I represent Ron and Angra Vance. They're the owners of five oh seven South Thirty-Eighth Street, which is the property directly south of the site. I would start by saying that I appreciate that the applicant submitted a revised application that takes into consideration the adverse possession claim that the Vances have filed and, under the presumption, that that would be a successful claim, which we think will be the case. However, as I mentioned at last month's meeting, when you exclude that adverse possession portion from the site being considered, it becomes apparent that the site is not big enough to support the structure that's being proposed. And I think that's... And I think that's, becomes very evident. Well, as I stated, I think the size of the site is an issue here. And I think it's evident from the waivers that the applicant is seeking that this site isn't large enough to support the project. They're seeking a total of eight waivers. And most of these are asking for substantial deviations from the underlying R6 code regulations. That's including a site area per unit requirement to be cut in half from 2,000 square feet to 1,053 square feet. A rear yard setback reduced from 25 feet to seven feet. Building coverage ratio from 50% to 75%. And a buffer yard requirement on the rear lot next to my client's property from 30 feet to seven feet. And these waivers are, are an indication that this project really seeks to fit a square peg into a round hole. The project just is not appropriate for this particular site. Under the PUR ordinance, as I read it, the site should comply with standards established for the base district, to the extent feasible. And it does go on to say that relief may be obtained to address site constraints. I would say that this application seeks more than just relief from different code sections. Given the amount and the severity of the waivers that they're asking for, in reality, those underlying R6 standards are being disregarded completely and new ones are being adopted. And I think you, as board members, in making your decision today, should question whether the PUR exists to provide the type of substantial waivers that are being asked for here. Or rather, whether the PUR is more appropriate with a proposal that just seeks a few moderate waivers with slight variances from the underlying code regulations. I would suggest to you that the latter is a more appropriate use of the PUR than the former. If you look at it as it stands, this application seeks to build a 47-foot-tall building, seven feet from the rear lot line from my client's property. And I would ask that you consider that image when making your decision. That should be an image in your head that indicates to you that this project is not appropriate for the site. And so I'd ask you to consider that as you make your determination today.
Thank you. Any other opponents who wish to speak?
Good afternoon. I'm Teresa Sefranik. I live at 503 North 38th Street in the Jocelyn Castle neighborhood. Uh, my discussion about this, destroying the home and putting up this box, is that it's just a box, if you look at it. And drive through the neighborhood and you can see for yourself as opposed to just what's put up here on the board. But it's, there's nothing aesthetic about it as far as historic, as far as how it, how it will fit in the neighborhood. It's kinda destroying a neighborhood because power and money's controlling it. They want population density. In our area of town, I know population density is all that's been talked about from 50th Street East. And it's changed that much in the last three years and progressively. Likewise, uh, it just, it destroys the whole neighborhood. Because it just looks like a box there. You say, well, what can we do about it? And it's wait, I guess the other people have talked about it, how tall it is and how it fits in. The other designer showhouses, uh, the other three corners are all designer historic houses. That it's gonna sit right there and drive by and then you can get a better example of it. Also, we have one area like this that they start moving into and get changes. Well, they can keep on moving because power and money controls it, despite what people wanna believe. Oh, let's try this or that. I can tell you right now, 40, uh, 41st and Dodge, where the old Travelin' used to be, is a whole big empty lot. Maybe they could put something there. 38th and 11th were street. On the northwest corner of 38th, they tore down all of that and sits there as an empty lot for sale. Maybe they could put something up in these areas, you know, look at that as an option, as opposed to coming into the historic neighborhood and putting up the big gigantic thing that they want, even though it's tax base or whatever. That's all I have to say.
Teresa, for your quick question. So you're familiar with the Blackstone area then, obviously?
Right, it's terrific.
And, and, okay, so let's, let's talk through that a little bit. So with everything that's been happening in the Blackstone district?
Right.
Okay, are you okay with what you've seen?
Uh, yeah, I would tell you, the, the businesses on Farnham is terrific. I've been there for a...
But it goes beyond Farnham. I mean, it's, it's, it's a little bit wider than that.
Well, it's mainly, it's mainly Farnham. All the, all the restaurants and the eateries and the bars and everything is on Farnham. Maybe a little bit scattering from there, but that's mainly where it is if you go over there and see it. I've been around there since 1975. I went to nursing school at the Med Center, went to medical school at the Med Center. And so I'm whole familiar with the whole kind of general area. The, uh, they were asking about other places around there. They've been there a long, long time. And they're not, they're, they're to the east of, east of where even he's talking about putting up the place. And drive by and then you get a sense of things.
Would you, would you agree that the improvements that have been made or the rent, or the, 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 the projects that have been done in, in that area have revitalized that area, Blackstone area?
Uh, yeah, but they've just revitalized the area, not building something new in there. It's all been revitalization of Eminger's Bakery. I mean, just different places that used to be there have all been, well, just revitalized or the area's changed as far as sizes.
Midtown Crossing is fairly new.
Yeah, that's, that's east of, I know. Well, th- these condos down there would be fine, but right where they wanna put 'em...
I, I just curious what your thought was about Blackstone in general?
Blackstone's an asset for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents who wish to speak?
Uh, hello. My name is Mark Von Drosick. I live at 555 South 34th Street, a few blocks away from this development. As a side note, I am a candidate for the legislature in District Nine. I'm a working-class person and a poor person running for the legislature, and so I wanna get up. And I do oppose this project because it's very expensive housing and I'd like to see more affordable housing in Blackstone. But I just wanna push back against the idea that just because someone owns a piece of property, that that means that they have more of a right to do something with that property than everyone else in the neighborhood or a group of people who have gotten together to express dissatisfaction with what's happening. I do a lot of organizing with tenants and people who are being evicted by slum lords here in midtown. And there's a pattern of gentrification happening in this city that Mr. Noddle himself alluded to at our meeting on Monday. And he said that he would like to see Omaha become more like Denver, which, as far as I'm concerned, is an unaffordable hellscape at this point compared to 10 years ago what it was. I see rich developers moving into neighborhoods and doing whatever they want, despite the opinions of poor and working-class people. And now, with respect to my affluent neighbors in Blackstone, in the Blackstone Neighborhood Association, I just really wanna push back against the idea that because someone has more money and they can buy property means that they have more of a right to do something with that property than other people. I think it's a fact that we live in one of the most unequal societies in the history of the earth. And to say that people who have money deserve more power or anything because of that is a slap in the face to working-class people in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents who wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the board?
Jay Beck. Would you enter your name again?
Jay Noddle, 2285 South 67th Street in Exeter Village.
Yeah, I think I know the answer to this, but again, I wasn't here for the last meeting. Was there any TIF money used in this, in this project?
We have not made a TIF application.
Do you intend to?
Might, based on these escalated costs, yes.
Okay. And when you were, when you were looking at this property as potential development, knowing that area, wh- what were you thinking in terms of design elements that you thought you might want to include in, into this? Because that's kinda what the, what the issue at, at hand here is, is, is the, the look and the feel of this compared to the rest of the neighborhood.
Well, it's a great question. Thank you for the question. Originally, what you didn't hear last time, unfortunately, is that we spent a fair amount of time walking neighborhoods in some other cities that are very similar to this neighborhood. They have old historic pockets and new development. Most all of them have one or more major institutions sort of on their hips. So we spent a lot of time walking and thinking about, um, is a little bit eclectic okay? And, and we, we think a little bit eclectic can be pretty interesting. And then when we got to looking at this site, um, and the first thing is, the way we found out about this is there was a previous Montessori application somewhere floating around. So, and that's how we became aware that the site, the home might be available. And then when we got to looking at it, you know, there's a, there's a building that's, I don't know the number of stories, but the building immediately adjacent to the east is at least 20 feet taller than what we're thinking about proposing. And then kind of as you hopscotch through the neighborhood, you hardly have a full block stretch where there isn't a different style of architecture. Some were built in the 50s, some were built in the 60s, some were built in the 70s. Many of them have been remodeled, re-populated, if you will, used for different things, all of which makes for a dynamic neighborhood. So where we were headed at the beginning was something more contemporary. And what we've decided is, we love that building. We'll find another place somewhere close by, God willing, to build it, if, if you all will have us. And if the marketplace will have us. But I think at the end of the day here, for us, changing materials and a little bit, and a lot of style, in spite of a, a big, uh, uh, building immediately adjacent to our east, made more sense. I think it's more sympathetic and appropriate for the neighborhood. And, you know, while I'm here, as long as I'm here, the, the thing I can say about the size of the building is, it, it just doesn't work as a development project to deliver, um, really nice condominiums in a smaller footprint because you can't provide the parking. And he who has, he or she who has the parking available is gonna be more successful. And if you build it without parking, and we could go to R6, R7, or maybe RA, or somebody could on this site, you're not gonna get much at all. And there's probably gonna be more reliance on the streets for not just visitor parking, but residential, you know, residence parking. So we kinda, you know, these are, these are all sort of like a Rubik's Cube and, and we played with it as much as we feel like we can.
We know that, that developments are oftentimes rolls, rolls of dice, right? Maybe they'll work, maybe they won't work. What do you, how do you know that this will work?
That's how I know it'll work.
Do you, have you done any kind of market research to know that there's a demand for these 400 to $600,000 units?
Yeah, we have. I mean, that would be privileged. It's, you know, our research should remain proprietary. But it, it's pretty clear that our medical center campus is growing and will continue to grow. There is a repurposing of buildings in the neighborhood, not just the hotel, but now Keywood Plaza, which we're very, very familiar with. We looked carefully at Keywood Plaza for something like this and determined that a better place for our group to start is something much smaller. We can keep our arms around it. We can remain much more flexible than we might be able to if it was a much larger project, many more units and so forth. So we feel really, really good about the, and, and very optimistic about the eventual success of developments like this in the neighborhood. And, you know, this is, um, this is very consistent with the goals that the city has for this neighborhood and, and others immediately adjacent. So we're trying to fit in with the guidelines that the city provides development projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, may we hear from the city, please?
Sure. I'd like to start off in addressing the existing ACI overlay in place for this property and the neighborhood in general. The ACI overlay came about in the, the mid 2000s. There was a few designs and, and buildings getting constructed and, um, not, not the greatest design. And from those efforts and city council and the public in general wanting better design for projects, Omaha by design was, was formed. And out of that effort came along Article 22, which is a section in our zoning code that provides a higher design requirement for certain portions of the city. Along with that, or several of those, there's different variations of ACI overlays. There's ACI one, two, three, and four. 10 to 12 years ago, there was a large effort from the, from the city, led by the planning department, to have certain corridors and districts in the city designated with those ACIs. There was a lot of outreach, a lot of public meetings. Notifications went to all property owners that were affected and had the ACI installed for their property. So that goes back to the late, I don't know, maybe 2008, 2009, if I, if I remember correctly. Many of the ACI overlay requirements don't apply to single-family homes. So, you know, if, if you're just sell your home or you're doing a home addition, it doesn't apply. But it does for other types of residential and office and commercial developments. Regarding preservation issue, this site is not within a local landmark district or locally designate for this property. There are some properties in the neighborhood that do have that designation, which does bring certain protections and standards through the historic preservation process. The number of waivers that are being requested, that is typical for many PUR projects that we have seen, not only in this area, in the downtown area. Many parts of our zoning code are more of a suburban code in general. Much of the meat of the actual code dates back to 1987. Now, there have been updates, code changes, new implementations, just like I mentioned with Article 22. But several components of that code have large setbacks, you know, other items that make infill redevelopment very difficult. So, you know, there's even another PUR later on this agenda that would have a similar amount of waivers. And it has not been uncommon to, to have that many, such as this project. Just a note regarding the potential southern property change with the adverse possession that's, that's being worked through. The submittal accounts for, I won't, it accounts for that property to transfer ownership to the southern property. If that does not occur, if this PUR were to be approved by city council and that adverse possession did not take effect, there could be a minor amendment to the PUR which would allow this site to, you know, not recover that land, but basically have that property line to where it's currently shown on our system. There will need to be an administrative subdivision that would be required before submittal of any building permit that accounts for where the actual property line is in place. So, um, you know, those protections are in place so that we don't have, you know, a 17-foot area that's, you know, not sure where, whose ownership it ends up with. Unless there's any questions from the board, we'll give our staff recommendation. Staff recommends approval of the PUR overlay district subject to submittal of acceptable final PUR plans prior to forwarding this request to city council.
Do I have a motion?
I move approval of the PUR plan.
Unit redevelopment overlay district subject to the submittal of acceptable final PUR plans, including acceptable building elevations prior to forwarding this on to city council.
Second.
Have a motion in second, Lisa. Will you please call the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved, six to zero.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number three. Case C3-19-231. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. The request is approval of the Ames Industrial Park TIF redevelopment project plan. And the location is 4411 North 20th Street. May we hear from the applicant, please? May we hear from the applicant, please?
Oh, yes, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, and the Ames Industrial Park TIF project is a little smaller project, as TIF projects go, but it has some very, uh, very positive aspects to it. It's located in the, uh, north, north Omaha, uh, in the heart of north Omaha. This is Florence Boulevard, and this is Ames, uh, so it's at the east end of Ames, right where Ames kinda takes a bend and goes southward. Uh, the main, there's a couple of buildings on this site. Uh, this building will be rehabbed, this building will be torn down and replaced with a smaller newly constructed building of about five thousand square feet. Site's industrially zoned, uh, the proposal is for an industrial use. Um, history of the building, this building, um, well, the, the entire property is, um, had historically been the Blue Monument Works, and the building on the north was a showroom. So, view looking along Florence Avenue side, looking north. Uh, it's constructed around nineteen hundred, um, they did headstones and, and monuments. This is a building, this one will be rehabbed. Uh, the developer is Justin Moore, he's the owner of Spencer Management. He operates a trucking business and also a small, uh, construction contracting business. He's looking for a new home for his businesses, he wishes to expand and expand employment as well. And, um, this property is available, he has a, an offer to, you know, a contract to purchase the property, and, um, it is, it's a property that really needs some attention. The building is in, uh, the building that will be rehabbed is in a pretty tough shape. Uh, its roof has failed, uh, there's some code violations on the building as well, and, um, he intends to, um, rehab this building and, and is seeking, uh, historic preservation tax credits to help with that rehab, in addition to, uh, the TIF that he has asked, tax-infront financing and support he's asking for today. Uh, the other building on the site, well, here's another view looking southeast at the showroom, the main building, um, and that would be, uh, Mr. Moore's headquarters for his businesses. The other building looks like this, and it has failed pretty substantially, and, uh, this is a building that'll be torn down and replaced with a new construction building, a five thousand square foot new structure with two commercial bays, commercial industrial uses. Um, total project cost is one point nine six million dollars, a little north of that. Um, the applicant is requesting two hundred eighty-two thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars in TIF support. Uh, this project complies with the TIF program guidelines, uh, it's been approved by the TIF committee, it's an appropriate land use for the area, applies with the city's master plan, and, um, we ask for your approval.
Thanks, Don.
Any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the board? Okay, may we hear from the city, please?
Staff recommends approval.
Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Lisa, we have a motion in a second, will you please call the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number four, case C three dash nineteen dash two four four. The applicant's the Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request is approval of the Redfield TIF redevelopment project plan, location nineteen oh one Howard and four three five South Twentieth Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Uh, yes, Don Seaton, on behalf of the City Planning Department. Um, this TIF project is located downtown at, uh, nineteenth and Howard, and Twentieth and Howard. It's actually kinda like the last project, there are two buildings involved in this project. What you see in, uh, here is the primary building. Um, it's located at nineteen oh one Howard Street, that's the southwest corner of nineteenth and Howard. Uh, it's currently vacant. Um, this building will be rehabbed for a mixed-use commercial office building. Um, it is on the National Register of Historic Places, um, and it will be rehabbed as a historic building, uh, maintaining the integrity, uh, the historic integrity of the building's appearance. Uh, the top floor will be, uh, is intended to be rehabbed for a single, large, like an anchor office user. Um, the other two upper floors, second and third floors, would be for smaller office users, um, but would maybe share some amenity areas. And then the lower level would be a combination coffee shop, uh, restaurant. Um, I think the target market is law offices, given the proximity to the courthouse. Um, this four-story building is about forty-seven thousand, eight hundred square feet in size. Uh, like I said, it's been vacant for a little while. Now diagonally across, across the street to the north, on the other side of, um, of Howard on Twentieth Street is this red brick building that's also involved in the TIF project and is within the boundaries of the TIF application. Um, this building is at four thirty-five South Twentieth Street, it's vacant as well. It will be repurposed for parking, and the parking will be to support the, uh, the four-story building we were just looking at. Um, it'll have two levels of parking, uh, it's got a daylighted basement and a main level that we see on this end. Uh, have about sixty parking stalls inside the building. Um, in addition to the TIF, the applicants are looking at using, or are intending to use state historic preservation and federal historic preservation tax credits, and also PACE financing, that's, uh, property assessed clean energy financing. Um, and, uh, in addition to, uh, some public improvements, uh, involving sidewalk and streetscaping, the developers will also be making a twenty-five thousand dollar contribution in the downtown improvements fund. Developer is nineteen oh one Howard Owner LLC, uh, Nearage Agarwall is the authorized representative. Again, this project complies with our TIF guidelines, it's consistent with the, uh, city's master plan, we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to speak? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the board? May we hear from the city, please?
Staff recommends approval.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion in a second, Lisa, will you please call the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, agenda items number five and ten will be taken together. Agenda item number five is C three dash nineteen dash two twenty-nine. The applicant is Elko Properties. Request is approval of an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from low-density residential to high-density residential. Location is four nine one two and four nine one four Davenport Street. Agenda item number ten is case C ten dash nineteen dash two thirty-nine, C eleven dash nineteen dash two twenty-four, and the applicant is also Elko Properties. Request is rezoning from R four thirty-five and R seven to R seven, along with approval of a PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district. The location is forty-nine twelve and forty-nine fourteen Davenport Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Jeff Deal, Deal Anderson Architecture, seventeen seventeen Vincent Street. I'm the applicant's representative, and we're gonna be requesting a holdover of one month. The applicant with Elko Properties had a minor medical emergency yesterday afternoon and was unable to make the trip from Denver to Omaha to present the case himself to the board and the public. So we would like to hold over each of the cases being presented.
Okay, both five and ten?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Any other proponents who wish to speak? Any opponents who wish to speak?
Opponent.
Come on down.
My name is Ralph Ross, I live at, uh, two twenty-four North Forty-Ninth Street, which is on this block, just a couple blocks away. This originally started out, I guess we are now our four single-family. This is not a very nice block in Dundee, but it's still Dundee, so we, we wanna be careful here. The, the, what you're being asked to do is to go to R seven, multifamily, medium-density multifamily. Okay, I mean, it's urban infill, why not? I mean, it's, we got the new nice bus coming down Dodge, let's, let's fill in empty places in Dundee. What bothers me about this is twenty-one units. It's the waiver to R seven that, that really shocks me. I mean, I mean, R seven would get you thirteen units on that site. Twenty-one is crammed in little tiny apartments, and I'm not sure Dundee needs that. I think, I think we're on a slippery slope if we're gonna be packing Dundee with, uh, jam-full buildings on, on small lots with tiny little apartments, so, that's, uh, thank you for listening to me, my parking meter's about shot.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
I have some letters, if I can bring those up?
Sure.
These are not all of them.
My name is Alan Rao, and, um, I live at forty-nine oh eight Chicago, and I'd like to maybe just tell you who I am. I'm a retired teacher, and, uh, my wife is, is here also, we live in the Dundee neighborhood, and I just happened to bring this book in because it's a very special place to us. Um, we've lived most of our adult lives in Omaha. We come from modest families that never owned property, so when we started looking for a neighborhood, it was a very long process. And we looked all over the city, we thought about building, et cetera, and we came to this neighborhood and we said, oh, this is home, this is where we wanna live. Um, I get a little emotional because of the fact we have a strong feeling for the neighborhood and a strong feeling for the people there. Um, I've been there since the seventies, it's over forty years. We've been part of the neighborhood, we've tried to help, we've volunteered, and it's really kinda neat every morning when I walk the neighborhood, 'cause I'm retired now, but, uh, to see people out, greeting people and painting and fixing, and if you've never dry-walled, you're in for an experience, so, uh, but, but the idea that there was a feeling and an emotion. Um, I taught geography off and on too over the years, I'm at Omaha Public Schools and Community College and, um, you know, so, but I try to impress them on my students, as you travel, there's a magic to the place, and you can't describe it, but there's a magic. Uh, and it's not one part, it's not one property, it's not one piece, it's the whole, the whole thing, so, uh, but there's a whole book written about it. We found out years later that it's, uh, more special than we thought, it's the home of Henry Fonda, Warren Buffett, in, in and around this area, and I'm sure that Marlon Brando, Warren and Henry Fonda, the stories about them playing in the neighborhoods and so on, so it's a special, special place. And I didn't know about covenants, I'm a newbie at this, I have no idea all the overlays and, and all this, and I apologize for my, um, not knowing, but, over that forty years, and as we've tried to help, uh, build our property, I think it's the old Borsham House, to be honest with you, but, uh, uh, blood, sweat, and tears, I'll tell ya, 'cause it was, um, really in a tough shape, so, but as I walk and I see the neighbors and I see what they're doing and so on and so forth, and then all of a sudden we'll get a notice that they're gonna tear down a house, you know, and it breaks my heart. They're not gonna rebuild them. Um, I wanna kinda remind you too, the Painted Ladies were scheduled for destruction in San Francisco. They're now a symbol of the city and they're a symbol, uh, for the country, so, and as I've listened to the others here too, I, I realize that you're faced with a very, very difficult problem, uh, the idea of maintaining what we have and also looking to the future too, and I, I do empathize with you, and I don't know if I could do, do your job, so, but I just want you to realize that, uh, we're, we're opposed to it, and I think most of my neighbors have had concerns about it, because, um, when you tear down the one house, probably never gonna be rebuilt, and, and I know that lot has been vacant for a while and so on, and, and I didn't know that we're for sale or whatever, so, but, uh, uh, we feel a very special attachment, so we're hoping that, uh, that you would not approve this project. And I, I don't know about overlays, I don't know about all these different kinds of things, but I do know it's, it's part of a, a magical painting, that you can't just take part of it away and not have the whole thing there, so, but, um, anyway, that's, that's how I feel about it, so. If there are questions, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents who wish to speak?
I've lived or worked, and mostly both, in Dundee since nineteen sixty-three, and I lived there when I was in high school, and all the little slip in apartment buildings were slipped in to, uh, save the neighborhood. They were built on a house lot with six or eight units, maybe twelve. The one across the street from us is, uh, two combined house lots with, uh, maybe twenty units. Uh, it's maintained really well. Some of them haven't had that level of maintenance. So, part of my issue is Dundee doesn't need to be saved like people felt it needed to be saved in the nineteen sixties when people were moving west, and the threat of, uh, extending a freeway truly up Davenport Street past Dundee School, uh, that went away. Um, and the density, uh, issue is, is, I, I find, um, confusing. Dundee is plenty dense right now, if you, uh, own a house and you share a driveway with your neighbor and you try to find a place to park sometimes, it's plenty dense. So twenty-one units on this street is, is, I think, far exceeds the need. Uh, having a, a building, a, another smaller building would probably not be so bad. But the density thing, if you want density, put it on, on the main streets, except Dodge Street's turning into a canyon, and, and it, it's kinda confusing to me. Uh, density is part of the issue. If you historically look back, Park Avenue had a lot of density, and, uh, after time when people moved out of the older buildings and moved west, had families and stuff, Park Avenue got to be pretty adventurous. The same with Drake Court, my grandmother lived there when I was a little kid, and that was luxury. And in the nineteen seventies, I met a girl that lived in Drake Court and I was afraid to go see her. So, there's things that come along with, uh, small apartments. Uh, they have kind of a time limit on them, I believe, kind of an expiration date, as newer buildings come up and people find different places to live. So, having a building is one, one thing. Having twenty-one units on two house lots, I, I find to be way too high. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents who wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the board? May we hear from the city, please?
Okay, um, the city's acceptable to a one-month layover. Uh, just a note to the neighbors, I mentioned it earlier, but if it is back on the agenda next month, we will not send new notifications. You can always call and check with us to make sure it's on the agenda, but it sounds like, uh, the desire from the applicant is to be back on next month, so.
Move to layover, second.
Have a motion in a second, Lisa, will you please call the vote?
Um, sorry, do agenda item five and then have a vote, and then number ten.
Agenda item number five, we have a motion.
I move to layover on agenda number five, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on agenda item number five, Lisa, will you please call the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to layover approved.
Okay, and Agenda Item Number 10, do we have a motion?
Motion to layover, Agenda Item Number 10.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, Lisa Lee, please call the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved, layover.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 15. Case number C-7-08-166, C-7-97-225. The applicant is Children's Hospital Foundation. The request is approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow hospital services general in a GO district. Property is located within an ACI 265 overlay district. Location is southeast of 84th Street and West Dodge Road and northwest of 84th Street and Indian Hills Drive. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, I'm Tim Jacoby, the Vice President of Facilities with Children's Hospital and Medical Center, address 8200 Dodge Street here in Omaha, 68114. And with me I have Brian Nielsen, who's the Lead Designer on the project, well, actually both projects. I think as most of y'all know, or probably all of you know, Children's is building a new tower and garage along West Dodge Road. And as a part of that project, there is a digital display on the corner of, on the southwest, northwest, northeast corner of that project. Since the hospital is in a civic use property within the GO zoning district, we need, the Digital Information Board is not permitted. So, for that, we need a conditional use permit amendment to allow that digital information display. We believe that's necessary or would help Children's Hospital and the community greatly because it gives near real-time information of services that we offer to the public. We have met with the planning department on use restrictions, what could be displayed, how often items could be turned over, brightness levels and items like that. And we've reached what I think we both have agreed to in a letter for the use restrictions of it. And so, we are requesting the amendment to the conditional use permit to allow that digital information display on the corner of, of that project. If you have any questions, you need to ask me or Brian.
When you say digital information, what type of digital information are you planning to broadcast on this sign?
It's mainly, it'll be steals that turn no more than every 10 seconds. And it could be information of services that are offered. It could be a, a display of a child that's recently, you know, had a very successful case, you know, on a joyous occasion. Mainly advertising what, or just showing to the community what Children's Hospital is about.
And, and before I go any further with my questions, let me first say that thank you for what Children's does in our community. You do a tremendous job and, and the services that you offer are so good and very much appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Thank you. It's an honor to be able to do it.
Thank you. Now, in saying that, I've got a couple more questions for you. Sign's already up.
I'm kind of asking for forgiveness. We aired, you know, we've been in front of this board, I don't know if y'all saw that, we've been in front of this board several times. And I'm new to Omaha. I've been here about three years, I came from LA. And I'm still learning all the rules. And somehow or another, when this got put up, the, this was left out of the previous conditional use permits amendment that we had to get. And then as we built the garage, it was a design-built project, prior to the sign, as the sign got up, there should have been a permit.
Who's your engineer?
Who's the engineer?
Engineer, engineer.
HDR is the engineer. It's a design-built project, was key with an HDR.
They would certainly know.
You would think. But I accept full responsibility for it, you know, as the owner.
So, we don't have more regulations than LA, I wouldn't imagine.
No, and, you know, and I, I could say, I accept full responsibility for it. And I'm, I was asking Brian when I stepped up here, I said, "Should I start by asking forgiveness?" And he said, "No, I'll let it go until it'll probably add." So, I am, I apologize for that.
You know, th- those signs are, are nice, they're really visually appealing and I've seen several of them and they are. But man, that's a very, very busy thoroughfare there. And, you know, there's always the fear that people are going to stop and gawk at the sign and not pay attention to what's in front of them. There are particularly a sign of that size and magnitude. That's why it's important, you know, to make sure that you're conforming with the, with the requirements that, that the city has on, on signage. And, you know, there's, and I don't know if you're familiar with the, the outlines of what's permissible now, but you've got, you know, maximum brightness, automatic dimming, brightness differences, 10-second minimum, all those things. And are you saying that you're going to be willing or can provide a sign that's going to meet all of these requirements?
Yeah, we, we absolutely can and that's our commitment is to do that. We met with the planning department and agreed to those and I think it's incumbent on us to do that now, you know, if this gets approved.
Can you, hardwired is not the right word anymore, but can the programming be such that the, this, this delay is mandatory, that it can't be overridden by somebody that tomorrow afternoon puts in a new program in there and all of a sudden it, it takes off and it becomes full video?
Yeah. I'm not the type of blackboard on that.
Brian Nielsen, 1917 South 67th Street, Exarban Village. There was two questions you asked and I want to answer both of those. We submitted as a part of this, so as Mr. Jacoby was indicating, we had multiple meetings with multiple members of the group. Going through that 10-second pause and delay provided a, a clip of that. I'm going to run through a couple of the shots. These are actual patients with approvals of the hospital, showing some of their services, what they do. Did you guys get the chance to see this?
Yeah, we saw it.
There was a question as to whether or not it was instantaneous or...
There was a pause.
There's a 10-second pause between images, the...
But there, but there was a, yeah, between the images.
Yes.
Yes.
It's not instantaneous. There's a little bit, it's a fade-in.
Slight fade-in, that is correct.
Yeah.
Some of the things we talked about was eliminating the white automatic dimmer. So, one of the questions you asked was the quickness between it, do we understand the brightness and all of those things? Absolutely. The technology that has come and the advancements of these systems, this is the same system that's basically Memorial Stadium in Lincoln, has all those capabilities, all built-in, all pre-programmed. So, we do understand that and there is a commitment by Children's Hospital to obey and listen to those requirements. If you drive around town right now, there is more than 50% that do not confine to those requirements. But we understand that, we've met with the parties and we want to make sure that we have those capabilities under control and done the right way. One of the other things I want to just talk about in terms of monitor and display, the display is approximately 60 feet by 20 feet. A standard billboard is anywhere from 15 feet by 50 feet. So, we're talking about a couple of feet difference in terms of overall, a typical board display that you would see up and down the road on Dodge Street or the interstate or anything like that between this and that situation as well.
Are you comfortable with this, with the, with the potential safety hazard that, that maybe some of us perceive might exist with a sign like that? Because everyone's going to want to look at, you know, at what you're doing with kids, right? I mean, it's just, but you get, I don't know how many cars go through West Dodge on it, on its typical day, but, you know, a lot.
You know, that's, it's an interesting question. You know, in a perfect world, would anybody be reasonably satisfied with any safety hazard? Of course not. I think we are taking all reasonable precautions to try to mitigate that. And we are certainly, we, we welcome any further suggestions on how to mitigate, you know, the safety risk on that, by all means.
Why that location of the, of the site, other than obvious, which is you got hundreds of thousands of cars a day going through it?
It was really the only place on the building where that, you know, except on an absolute flat surface, which would be facing north, that it could have done, that you could have done that. And if it would have been much further, it could only go in a portion of the building that was adjacent, around the parking garage, you really couldn't have been on the building because it would have, you can't see through it and it would have inhibited windows.
Could you have done it on a monument sign with this little inset board instead of a big sign like that? Could you have done it with a monument sign up on the corner or something?
Brian Nielsen, 1917 South 67th Street. Obviously, there's a, there's a million things that could have happened, but intrinsically it's a part of the parking garage design itself that is trying to keep the focus point of not being a garage. One of the things Omaha by Design was brought up, we're very aware of all of those regulations. The idea was not to put a seven-story parking garage right on West Dodge Road in accordance with the setbacks and using that and keeping that line of Omaha by Design and not having cars sitting there on all seven levels. So, the design was incorporating those pieces, trying to bring a good design to the community there and hide the cars and also create some visual appeal and opportunity for highlighting the services of Children's Hospital.
Incorporating several different components or ideas into the one function of the building.
Yeah. First of all, I'm amazed that you were able to fit that structure in that little piece of ground there that, that you did. So, it was kind of an engineering marvel in my estimation and I would, I'm really pleased that it came out the way it did. That just worries me, I'll just be honest with you, that just worries me. For no other reason other than, well, first of all, you know, you, you took out, you put something up that you knew probably required a, a permit first. And, you know, you probably could have gotten some of this information ahead of time now or when you decided to put that up. But just the safety hazard, I think that, that creates as well is a little bit troubling to me. But you've got a lot of conditions to meet here, too, required by the city.
We do and we, we appreciate those conditions. When there is zero pushback from Children's, we understand why they're there and we're committed to following them.
Okay, thank you.
So, I guess we recognize that, you know, you're making a, a public pledge to comply with, with our conditions. And obviously, we have a great deal of concern because of, as you said before, there are just other places where, you know, they get it fixed right and then a month later we go by again and it's, it's out of compliance again. And so, I, I think, I don't know if this is the way it normally is, but, you know, once that thing is, is, I mean, presumably we give approval today with these conditions attached, that prior to us being turned on officially, that you might invite the planning board or the planning staff out to demonstrate and to assure them, show them what kind of restraints are put in, into the programming so that they will not, in fact, turn into a movie screen.
I think we actually made that offer when we met with the planning board, for them to come out and tour and meet with us. I think we made that offer.
Okay.
And we've listed all of those conditions in the application as well that we will obey.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the board? May we hear from the city, please?
Yeah, so obviously, Tim had mentioned, you know, previous major amendments for their expansion and hospital services requires a conditional use permit due to the two waivers that are needed, has to come through for the major amendment, and then it'll also be on the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting agenda next week. Specifically, the two waivers for total sign budget up to 2,520 square feet and then to allow an electronic information sign not otherwise permitted. If the applicant can comply with the regulations outlined in Section 55-854 of the Omaha Municipal Code, we consider the request acceptable. Yes, signage out there is always a battle on, on certain sites and there are poor examples of signage throughout our jurisdiction and, you know, it can be a difficult matter when we have a willing participant acknowledging that they will need to meet those criteria. We definitely hope that that's the case. If they, I'm not saying that they would, but if they were not in compliance with those regulations, the planning board does have the ability to bring them back before the board and theoretically could revoke the, the use permit. But we're hoping that, wouldn't come to that, obviously. Staff recommends approval of the major amendment to conditional use permit to allow hospital services general in a GO district subject to the seven conditions laid out in the recommendation report.
I want to butt in for a minute, please. I, the testimony I heard, I just want to make sure what we mean by instantaneous. And when we talked about instantaneous at our pre-meeting, I thought it was pretty clear, but I'm not sure, maybe everybody's not clear right now. Because when we talked about it just recently, it was, yes, it'll be every 10 seconds. Instantaneous means no fade-in, no fade-out, no snowflakes down, no sideward movements, instantaneous. It's one image is there, the next image is there. It's like, you know, instantaneous, not fade-in, fade-out, waterfall in, waterfall out, just so we're all clear. That's, so when this came to us and, and the conditions that are in our report are exactly how a electronic off-premise billboard would operate. I just want to be clear.
I assume we can ask for another example of what that might look like without fade-in, fade-out? Because what we saw today included a fade-in and fade-out, it was not instantaneous.
Correct.
Yeah. So, I would only ask that we provide the city planning department with a new look or program of what that's going to look like?
You finished with your recommendation? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Amendment to a conditional use permit to allow hospital services general in a GO district subject to the seven conditions in the staff's recommendation report.
Have a motion and a second, Lisa Lee, please call the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved, six to zero.
Okay, thank you. On to Agenda Item Number 19, which was removed from the consent agenda. This is case number C-14-19-242. The applicant is the planning department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request is vacation of the east-west alley west of North 28th Avenue between Benny Street and Maple Street, abutting Lot 91, Block 0 of Giza's Edition and lots 3 through 11 and 13, Block 0 of Remington Subdivision. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
I guess that I will speak on behalf of the city. So, this request is to vacate an alley west of 28th Avenue between Benny Street and Maple Street. So, it's roughly 4,500 square foot of alley right-of-way. There's a fence that currently borders the southern portion of the, of the, of the alley. Over the years, the adjacent property owners to the north have maintained the land as if it were their own. The city Public Works Department received a request for the property owner of 2863 Benny Street about the possibility of vacating that remnant piece of alley. There are two types of methods to go through the, now, there's more than that, but generally, there's two methods to go through a vacation of alley right-of-way such as this. There's either a petition which is brought forward by abutting property owners of at least 75% of the alley, or if it's less than that, an applicant can request the planning board initiate such a vacation. Because the desire is to have the alley vacation go to the property owners only on the north half of the alley, therefore it'd be less than 75%, we believe that the planning board initiated alley vacation is appropriate. I'll let you continue the public hearing, but, yeah, we'll go to that.
Any other proponents? Are there any opponents who wish to speak? Come on up.
Michelle Payne, 2866 Benny, 2867 Benny and 2863 was my mother's property. But ma'am, I have been maintaining that alley for almost 60-plus years. I grew it up right in that corridor. But the applicants were there, I would like to ask them where the block in the alley, I mean, the planning board said that they can have the right to take it or whatever in the domain or, or they just buy it or, so they just want to take...
I'm going to grab the file to, to see the name of who actually requested it.
Yes, sir.
But basically, this is, the alley right now is city-owned. So, it's city property at this time.
Yes, sir.
The request would be to whoever... The request would be to whoever the requesting party is to purchase that alley that the city has deemed that we no longer need to maintain or to, to own. So, the applicant would purchase the alley and it would go to the adjacent property owners. But right now, it is city-owned property.
Yes, sir.
Sir, you had mentioned, what was the address that you and your mother owned?
She owned 2863. That's the people that's in there now, whoever they are. But I owned the property at 2867, the west of 2863. And me, well, my wife and I owned the property at 2914 North 28th. Always get the problem with that, the address, because I didn't live there. That's my wife's, my in-law's property. But anyway, it's 2914 North 28th Avenue.
So, the request is from, I'm going to, I'm going to struggle with this name. I apologize.
No swear.
Bick Nak Nho.
Vietnamese.
2863 Benny Street is who we received.
Okay.
But did you state that that's your mother's property?
It was my mother's property.
It was?
Yes, she had a reverse mortgage, a predatory lending.
Okay.
It's a long story. I don't really want to go through it anyway. That was my mother's property for over 70, 70 years.
Okay.
Agnes Payne. But, no, I live across the street.
Okay.
Yeah, can we put this out?
To see which one of these is 2863?
Yes, it should be a, well, a big yellow house.
We can only see the roots.
Yes, ma'am.
Benny, across the street, that's the alley. 2863 is right here.
That's great.
That's my property.
So, you're next door?
Well, it's, it's a vacant lot.
Okay.
I got a pod there. That's that building right there and I live right across the street.
So, which one's 28?
So, which ones, which one's 2863?
Can we block him?
It's just about the biggest.
Yeah, we can't see.
Eric England, City Planning. 2863 Benny Street is the requesting party. So, basically, this alley vacation, it'd be my understanding that each adjacent property owner would become in possession of the vacated alley. We wouldn't, the way that it's set up, we don't want this requesting party to own the entire alley. That's, that's not the intent.
Where, where does Mr. Payne live?
I live across the street, but that's my property, 2867. The white spot right there is a pod.
Okay.
So, how would the maintenance of that alley work if there's, how many owners then? One, two, three, four, five? Maybe even more on both, eight?
So, basically, it would be sold, the vacation process is basically selling the city-owned process to those adjacent property owners. Now, when there's only one party requesting, I can't speak, I don't know if Public Works wants to comment here at this meeting. Some of that determination of purchase, the appraised value have to be determined at a later date after planning board. Okay? So, but theoretically, each adjacent property to the north of that alley would own that segment adjacent to the property. So, it becomes part of their property.
So, it's like split down the half? Split down the middle?
We're not splitting it in half to the property owners to the south.
All go to the north.
It's all to the property owners to the north.
Why would they want it?
Well?
They've been maintaining it.
No, they haven't. No, excuse me. I've been maintaining it.
So, you're not in one of those houses to the north?
I was living at 2867 Benny and 2863 Benny where my mother was living. But, no, I've been maintaining that property all my, I'm not dead yet, but I'll be here all my life. But, no, I've been maintaining that property even when my wife's people was there and they was there close to 100 years. But...
So, if this, if this goes through, Mr. Payne would, you would gain land at 2914 North 28th Avenue because you own that property, correct?
Yes.
You would gain land at 2867 because you own that. And was it 2860 that you also said?
No, I said 2867.
Okay.
Where, where the white pile's at.
Right.
Oh, oh, Benny Street, right there.
You can, it's, the map is on the, yeah, that right there.
Is there any cost to those property owners, Eric?
Well, I, I pay $12 a year for my lot, but we just had the 28, 2914 property tore down, but we still have the property and we painted it. So, that's, that's, it's still ours.
Are there driveways? To access the homes to the south? To, I mean, is, is the alley used for access to those properties?
Yeah, well, I used it at my 2867 property to come out the, back there. They did put a fence up there, so I told them they can't have no block in that. So, I took it down.
What about homes on the south side?
The south side, they could, they could use their alleyway, but it's, but it's not finished. Well, I'm just saying finished because there's weeds and everything back in, back in their yards. But I, I tried to clean that out and kept it, the alley all the way up to 2867 clear, so I can just use the alley if I need to, although the neighbors, I'm not, I don't even want to cramp this out. We all got to live together. So, the people at 2910, they've been parking their cars up in the alley for years, but I still got around, you know, but I just kind of let them stay there because they, they cut the grass with that. But, no, I've been clearing that property for years.
Sir, do you have opposition to gaining, to gaining the land to become part of your property? Or do you have opposition to pay anything for the land? Or are you just asking questions?
I just don't want them to block the, block the alley. I just don't want to block the alley.
So, you don't want it to be vacated? You would like it to remain in alley, basically?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would recommend continuing the public hearing. For other opposition, you know, potentially, it might be a good idea to lay it over a month to have Public Works reach out to the applicant to, to have them come.
What he wants to...
Yeah, what he wants. Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, people.
My comment is, it just seems like... You know, we've got one applicant that started this process. We really don't know everybody else's opinion other than, than yours, sir.
Mr. Payne.
And, and we certainly don't know what's going on with the people in the south. It just seems like there ought to be some more information brought to us.
Well, they're, I'm pretty sure they're homeowners, property owners. But, see, I know for a fact that, well, they should come out and say what they are though. So, I'll let them go in and say what they, what they are.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Happy holidays, okay?
Happy holidays.
Any other opponents who wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? May we hear from the city, please?
Yeah, I mean, our recommendation report is a recommendation for approval to retention of any easements.
Sir, you might...
Sir, hold on.
You might want to wait until we dispose of this so you know exactly what's happening before you leave. Yeah.
Yeah, so our, so our report is recommending approval, subject to retention of any easements, considering the opposition of this neighbor and kind of the, I guess I would feel more comfortable with the appropriate Public Works Division reaching out to the applicant to have further discussions. So, I'd recommend laying over one month.
Will all the homeowners to the north receive a notice for the layover meeting?
We, we can send a notice.
Has, has the notice been sent?
In south, probably.
I know that we notified to the neighbors on the north. Let me look. We notified all property owners adjacent on the north and south.
And south.
We can do that again.
So, they were aware of this hearing?
They were.
That's why this gentleman showed up.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We've heard from the city. Do we have a motion?
Motion to layover.
Have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you call the vote, please?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to layover approved.
Okay, sir, it's been laid over. What that means is that it will be heard again next month at the next planning board meeting. Hopefully, the applicant will come and explain what it is he's trying to do by requesting the vacation.
And you can still oppose it?
You can still come back and, and speak again if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the agenda. We do have minutes to be approved. Would anyone like to make a motion on the pre-meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes for the pre-meeting for last month, November 6.
Have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you please call the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. And for the minutes from the meeting last month.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you please call the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Yes, with presence.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve at 3:31 approved.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you.